Hello, hello. Well, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at seven O E P on this quarter Twitter. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from our last meeting, which?
Yes.
Was on the nineteenth August. That's where I was like pausing and thinking, okay. And are there any changes, questions to those minutes?
I actually have an edit. Just, it's a small edit. It's just, our guest was Dana Sheen. And he is in the minutes, it's Dan Sheen. So, we need an A at the end of Dan and another E on Sheen and then we'll be.
Okay, perfect. So could I have a motion to approve said minutes with the modifications? Of Dana's.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five with Dana Sheen revised as discussed.
My second.
You all in favor?
Hi.
So hello, for those of us that are joining us today remotely. I can't see that far away, but I want to say hello. Um, is there any correspondence? Or community input that people here at the school committee have to see? Are you? Are you, Mariana?
No.
Is there anyone that is online that would like to comment and or speak? I don't see anybody in the chat. Okay. Uh, if not, then we're moving on to the examination and authorization for the payment of bills. So, uh, Rob or Heather, we're gonna be able to speak.
Rob is here.
Yes. Rob? Okay.
Everybody?
Oh, hi. There you are.
Uh, let me find that bill roll, which I just, there we go. First of all, do you like my new sweater I have on? No college sweater, but anyway, these bills are pretty standard stuff. Uh, the beginning of it, North Shore Educational Consortium is sped related. Quill, Amazon, et cetera, are supplies. Uh, McGrath's is related to the finishing off of the grading for the greenhouse that comes out of the grant and money raised. Uh, A one exterminators is a fall pest elimination. National Grid and Home Depot, Home Depot supply is, uh, supplies, obviously. M S Construction is for, uh, the work that was done to actually construct the structure of the greenhouse. That the Spinuchis oversaw. And that's paying the company that did the construction, so the general contractor pays that individual. Uh, Action Ambulance is sped transport. Seem Collaborative is special education, Healy Bus is our bus contract. Wilson Training is for curriculum. Brick Markers is for the, the brick walkway, it was a, a straggler, that's one purchase. Um, supplies, otherwise than that, Easter Seals is a, uh, sped placement amount for an older child that's still under our responsibility. Uh, for a total of one hundred and twenty thousand, three sixty-five fifty.
But I have a motion to approve the bill roll.
Motion to approve the bill roll presented at the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting. The amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Moving on to the superintendent's report, and yes, I love your new sweater, Rob.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna, if I can find the video, I'll probably turn that off and just be vocal, I think. My items, uh, first of all. I don't wanna go into any great detail, but it's been kind of a long haul for me. Uh, I'm getting better, I should be able to be back physically in school on Friday. I'll have dialysis for a little while, but my numbers are improving. So what was a really scary experience, I think I'm coming out of. Uh, the greenhouse walkway, uh, scheduled to start tomorrow with a hundred and seventy bricks to be installed. Um, Edgar, um, Lopez, um, landscaping will be the one putting in the walkway. I'm not sure the forecast is ideal for tomorrow, so I'm not absolutely sure it will start tomorrow. Uh, we have decided rather than to, uh...
We're having a very hard time hearing you, some very horrible.
Yeah, I couldn't quite hear that.
Yep, there you are. Yeah, we, we couldn't hear you, you sounded like you were underwater there.
Yes, when you started to describe. The inside the greenhouse.
Let me, let me try again.
You wanna call in on your phone?
A thumb up if you can hear me, a thumb down if you can't.
We can hear you.
Right now.
Okay. The walkway hopefully will start tomorrow, the green team has twenty-five kids signed up. There were two kindergartners, two first graders, six second graders, uh, five third graders, five fourth graders. Two fifth graders and three sixth graders. So that's kind of a nice group to work with, we've advertised for a stipend for someone to help me coordinate the work that will be done. The plan is to, uh, have the club, the green team meet on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursdays during the week. And someone can join for one day, uh, they can join for multiple days, but only do a month. Uh, the idea is to get as many kids involved as we possibly can. Uh, we have developed something that maybe Heather can show you on the way out to take a quick look at the greenhouse, which is the belief banner. Each class came up with their top nine things that they wanted to put their stake in the sand as a class. What they wanted their school to be this year. Uh, we took that and coordinated down to the top ten. And then we've asked kids to go up with their class. And if they agree with those, um, they sign off, they sign it onto a box that, yes, I, I believe in all of this. They don't have to sign, nobody's gonna worry about who signs and doesn't sign. But the top tens things that the kids came up with, and I'm really impressed with what they came up with. Number one is be kind. Number two is believe in yourself. Number three is be respectful. Number four is try your best and have fun. Number five is be honest. Number six is be safe. Number seven is be accepting. Number eight is be helpful. Number nine is be responsible. And number ten is be unique and creative. So I'm, I'm really impressed that our kids came up with that. I've had a couple of pictures that have come of kids signing off on that. They have a couple more days to do so. And obviously they can do it anytime they want, the teachers sign off on it. And I think it's a real visual way of saying, this is what we're about, we do this here and we don't do this here. And, um, never wanna editorialize, but it'd be nice if our entire country could take on that same kind of approach that our kids are taking on. Uh, the next thing is, I wanna thank Heather and the staff, uh, for covering for me, it's not something I expected to have happen. I have, uh, tried to work remotely as much as I can. And, um, without them holding up the shift and making things, uh, work. Uh, it would have been a lot more difficult than it is, so it's been turnkey. And it's because of a tremendous staff and support staff that have pulled together to make this year what we had for goal this summer. To be the best year for J E S. Um, I wanna just plant a, a thought that it might be that my dialysis right now is in Salem at two forty-five on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. That the next school committee meeting, if I'm still having dialysis, which I hope I'm not. That we might need to move that October meeting, uh, to either the sixth or the eighth, Monday or Wednesday instead of the seventh. So I wanted to at least see if that theoretically could work for people. And if it did, maybe we should just move it now and get it done. And, um, that I don't have to worry about four or five days before trying to, uh, jockey it around. So I'll, I'll leave that open to you folks to see if that's something that, uh, is feasible or not.
My gosh, Rob, yes, of course we'll accommodate. We can actually talk about it right now, I know it's out of, out of order, um, on the agenda, you know. But does anyone have a scheduling conflict that we would move the school committee to, um, Monday, October?
I can do Monday the sixth, I can't do the...
I can do Monday the sixth as well, I cannot do Wednesday.
This is, I'm good, and I'll, I'll talk to, uh, that as well, but we'll have more, so we'll move. The school committee meeting that was scheduled originally for the Tuesday, the seven. Seven to Monday, the sixth, we should probably vote on that.
Motion to move the school committee meeting presently scheduled for October seventh, twenty twenty-five to October sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Your second.
On favor?
Hi.
Rob, you take care of yourself, I think you're amazing.
I appreciate that very much.
Moving on to the principal's report, okay? Um, so great things have been happening, we miss Rob tremendously, but we think this area should forward and see the day. Um, tomorrow, our kindergartners are going to the first day for the first year. Yep, they're heading to, uh, Brookfield Farm. Farm, yeah, so they're gonna do some more, um, observation of their science, which is kind of like. They're very excited for that, for their first hand experience curriculum. Um, we also, as Rob mentioned, the green team is off the best start, they're twenty-five good sign up, which is outstanding. Um. Today, we did, uh, for supporting our teacher evaluation, so I did a staff meeting where I'm supporting teachers to go over. Um, the evaluations process looks like the next season and our expectations here at Johnson. And timing and aligning all of the person, maybe using their evaluation goals specifically to the, um, spring program. So the work they've been doing currently will tie in to that, so it's not like adding another goal on. It's gonna be, maybe specifically at student learning, um, I explained, and they were awesome, they had some different questions around the difference between student learning and professional bills. And then how that ties into the evaluation process and to, to help students to move forward from their learning and also help them to improve their practice. That was very successful, Rob. Um, we started this week, or actually, we started last week with our P L Cs that, um, people go, they're moving first and second, third, fourth, fifth. Um. This past week, we did data analysis during that, so the students of all people from kindergarten through sixth, the difference assessment, some of the group's data reading and math assessment this summer. So, um, the meeting interventionists, I wanna give a shout out to Katie Pastor for her first, um, data meeting that she's been doing so carefully. Um, where she met with each grade level, where the assessments are, and then helping to, uh, work with teachers collaboratively where they're identifying student needs for intervention. Um, so in their wind rock, twenty-five minute rock and fire in the day, teachers are working in small groups, whether it's interventionists, um, E S P, or people. In small groups to be able to private areas for growth, whether it's, um, at their grade level, a lower grade level, or even a... So we're really stretching the point on the Facebook, so we're getting exactly what we need. And then, right, what I need. So we're, I think we're in a great spot, uh, teachers are working really hard, many of them are talking about making that bit professional, but it's really finding the purpose, be able to bring, um, the best practices for intervention to new factors, and they're very excited for that. Um, and then in our music and arts, uh, the music department, uh, Jeff, Jessica, um. Who got, and I have been working together, we wrote, uh, a proposal for the Nahai Education Foundation, asking them to, uh, to... They said that they're going to be, uh, honoring money for art this year for music. So we put together a grant, um, proposal to them to supply some additional instruments and sheet music for the band program and the new vocals that were added this year. Um, so we got that approved, and we're excited, yeah, we gave that to, um, Watson. So that's in the works right now, um, and our music program is exciting to announce that we're up to thirty students who are going to be playing instrument. And we now have opened up, um, signups for the new vocals, and they're gonna be called the J E S Love Star Singers. So we're very excited for that, a lot of kids are, um, you know, are need, getting excited. So we, we set it up so that the band is on different dates than the singing, so that you can be there when you want to. So, uh, the singing class will be like in the mornings before clear on Friday, and then the band lessons are going to be there the day before after clear for the full day. Uh, to do different assemblies, we're working, uh, right now on our Veterans Day ceremony, um, and we're gonna be getting in touch with, um... Wait a minute, John or Rob?
Yes.
To get, make sure we have all the news of the veterans, that we're invited, and we're gonna ask that all students be a part of the ceremony so that they can set their, uh, groups in their family. Looking forward to that. Um, oh, then the art teacher, Ms. Chaney, she is started a cultural art trip club. And that is open to grades eight through six for ten students. Um, the first trip is to the P E as a P E brand, so it'll be a once a month trip, like she's about to go.
It's a little tree.
That's fantastic.
I love it.
Yeah, and they're gonna, so we're looking at, looking at expanding our students' experiences with different cultures. She's targeting that with P E brand, so that people are able to go there.
You may be, um, for Nahai Cultural.
That's what I said, that's what I said to him. That's what I said to him.
River was competition aid for the new land, Harbor Park, the land was once the home of a landfill and a manufactured gas plant, and after years, um, she dedicated the work in a public private project, the Harbor Park has thirty acres of waterfront views and a little something for everyone.
Oh, it's crazy.
Many of us have seen the site right along.
But you.
Oh, there we go.
Ah, there we go, thank you. Thank you, the other one. Okay, um, so I actually have had conversations with, um, Ms. Brian about.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, so I've already got the ball rolling and I've got the grant pretty much there. I'm just gonna go over it and Rob, but then, uh, submit. For that, hoping that that can then cover, so the way Ms. Chaney and I initially organized it was that we would pay the seven dollars for the first trip to the, to the, and be on the circuit for the grant. And then the remainder of the trips, hopefully, right? But if we get the grant, then we'll be able to have that covered.
Oh, it's wonderful.
Could we be able to do that? Um. And then Rob talked a lot about the, um, the banner and really having that tell you, and what, I just wanna add on to what he said, but the kids. All of their classes came up with you by years, but then you worked with the, kind of the top ten. And what is most unique about it is that the preschool rules that we have identified as a big overarching rule, put within that. So being respectful, being respectful, being faithful, and the kids, they value that as one of the top, top things within this top ten. It's great to, to see that alignment, that they feel that way too.
It's nice to see this staff and stick out. Well, simple, easy, and this is what we want to talk, it's great.
It's been great, today I had to, um, reteach a couple of, um, rules around lunchroom, so then we just pulled out our, our, um... Nothing else around one for next preparation, and then went on a little field trip with some different agents, and we revisited behaviors that we had, that we thought would be ridiculous, I thought it was true. Yeah, that is good. Um, men, sisters, and we, oh, and then one other thing I just wanted to mention about, uh, Parents Square, I really appreciate the funding of that, because having all the communication through Parents Square has been great. It has streamlined, um, keeping information current in families so that information can get to them quickly and, um...
I like that.
Yeah, it has been outstanding, the direct messaging that teachers can be with families to keep that community available, it's been fabulous. Good feedback from staff, good feedback from families, and, uh, pretty, pretty great, I enjoy it, made a lot of good work in there. Um, our new math program is off. Really working hard to add in a special education meeting today, and the parents were, like, speaking very highly of the program. And another current, another day, so I really want to give you directions on how to do math to support your family for homework, so that, that's been extremely positive. We're excited, again, more excitement, I'm feeling so much excited. Yeah, it's great, and then I also, um... Wanna point out that the staff has just been so dedicated and really focused on making their classrooms so welcoming for students and really holding those P D I S morals of respect for our students. And just watching, even getting them, I feel so lucky to just see the excitement every teacher has laughing in the day. If you're staying late, sometimes I'm walking away, but, but there's still people around the building hearing them, so the dedication here for the students of our family is so fortunate, such a... We're all there, yeah. It's really nice. Um, the kids here are, like, there's so much potential and so much room for growth in their future. But that covers, um, everything that I have to share.
Thank you. Lot of fun stuff going on.
Yes. So, um, we filled out P E teacher, and, yep, so Sean Gallagher is our new hire for P E. He just started last week, or maybe a week before, all my weeks of lending, um, fantastic, he's like six-three and that's what all the kids want to know about. How tall are you?
He must seem like a giant.
And he's, he's a very gentle guy. He's super nice and the kids really have taken him, uh, he's also doing some substituting on the days that he, uh, he, he's here. And, um, today he had recess, they were, the kids were coming in, all sweaty and, uh...
Mr. G was teaching us how to do Kaba pit.
Yeah, I'm excited, so it was an added bonus. It's been everything to go there, but, um, we've also added a new O T, Nicole Brown. Um, she is often running, you know, her job, uh, and we've hired another E S P, Ally Mitchell, for second grade. And she's coming from small places, like she was doing, uh, multiple different sections that were supportive for the education. So, um, we have a bonus girl. Um, and then Sarah Harrow was, um, a multi-levels, one teacher last year for a special education. Uh, we do have a student that has been enrolled, so we have that. Oh, we have two open positions, uh, I think, we have the director position still open, we've done quite a few interviews and haven't really found the right, right yet. Um, and then we just recently opened a part-time special education teacher, we have their number, uh, specifically. Um, trying, Rob and I are working creatively to see if we can find ways to possibly blend those things together, um, just looking at, uh, with our needs of that. Uh, and then our other positions are substitutes, everyone out there, maybe a substitute?
All in, Rob, go. Thank you, and thank you for, uh, special education. I don't think we have any old business discussed. The building facilities, they do get a chance to look at that place in it all. We've been getting some interest, I mean, just been giving them a real time, so, you know, we're just coming. And I have looked at that, um, so that, our next school committee meeting, we will... New business. There's a number of items that we'll add on. On the next meeting, something, unless there's something. Rob, do you have anything to add? I'm gonna take that as no, because I hope someone's lost it. Future agenda item involving numbers, although I do see some of those. Ooh, maybe we should talk about those now.
So, um, as you can see, just took a second to, to let it go over and see our number. So, um, as you can see, just take the second panel glance over and see our numbers of residents currently for enrollment, um, pretty consistent across the board. Increased, obviously, second grade, and then the, the, the two patterns. It's a great number, but it's nice to see the. Yeah, it's a great number. And hoping that there's a silver and maybe this year that we.
Thank you. I always find.
Yeah, I think it, it helps us too in so many other aspects, that's even the technology that we have, that we need to adapt. Whether it's going up and down, it's material. And so, uh, we'll add.
Who's getting enrollment right now? I.
Total of one seventy-five.
Yeah, Rob, we're talking about enrollment.
All right, thanks. So if, if you guys got the sheet in front of you, I wanted to sort of point out a couple of things, if, if I can. If I could turn off that air conditioner, it wouldn't sound like I was underwater, but, um, nobody bonds to the bell anyway. But if you look at the, the bottom line, it's got both two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five. Two thousand twenty-four's total, including preschool, was one sixty-nine. Two thousand twenty-five is one seventy-five. But I think the interesting thing, if you go on the diagonal, like take kindergarten twenty-four and matriculate it to grade one twenty-five, twenty-one kids, still twenty-one kids. Grade one was twenty-seven kids, still twenty-seven kids. Grade two was nineteen. Grade three is now, which was grade two, is a plus one. Grade three was fifteen. The matriculated grade four is still fifteen. Grade four is the one that had a couple of students choose to go homeschool. So twenty-four in twenty-four to twenty-two and twenty-five. Grade five was thirteen, matriculated to grade six being thirteen. And the nine was last year's graduating class. I, I think the point I see in that is some of the worry in past years, especially in upper grades of kids maybe, um, choosing other opportunities or venues doesn't seem to have been the case from last year to this year. And I think that's, um, rewarding and significant of trust in what's going on at Johnson Elementary School right now. At least that's what I take from those numbers. Not only is there a total overall increase, but there is not a significant drop in the upper grades from what had been there last year. And grade six, which a few years ago was five or six kids, is now thirteen. Um, next year's grade six, if we had the same trend, would be twenty-two kids. And it's been a while since we've had that number. So that's what I got out of looking at those numbers. Isn't just a, a raw increase, but that, um, sort of trust factor that I see being shown in those numbers. So. That's. I feel about it.
Brown again. It's okay, Rob. Okay, so we have discussed everything, and I believe we have. Um, could I have a motion to adjourn this at seven thirty-six?
Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-six p.m.
My second.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Rob, take care of yourself.